All right. We always love recognizing our state champions and we have several tonight. So we will begin with our Governor's Cup State Champion Helen Ross. Congratulations. Fantastic job. We have a state champion shirt for you that I just unfolded. Winning is in everything, it's just how I roll. Hopefully it's your socks. I don't think it's socks.
Congratulations.
Certificates now.
Oh, certificates. See? I got all these certificates.
You should be able to forward with your name on it.
So Helen, what did you have to do?
It was not, it was not there on the table.
Oh yeah? Is it written for you?
It's written on the table.
It's written, sure it's there?
And you're a senior, right? Any decisions yet on what you're doing next? Where? Overland, okay.
Now that I am, let me go ahead and read it to everyone, okay? Fort Thomas Independent Schools hereby congratulates and expresses its appreciation to Helen Ross for the honor and prestige she has brought to herself and the school and the community by the excellence displayed by placing first in Kentucky. 2017 State Champion Governor's Cup Competition General Knowledge Exam.
Mr. Fennell, we were talking down here, I think she also needs to be recognized for her perfect ACT score. And she's also, so the young lady got a 36 out of 36, which is hard to do. And she is also a National Merit finalist, so congratulations. Outstanding. Good luck, good luck to you guys.
All right, Odyssey of the Mind.
I have the pleasure to introduce five Johnson students. They're actually third graders and they placed first at state. So we have Lillian Foley, Elise Hellman, Caitlin Ryan, Lyda Vangle, and Cindy Layman. Would you like for them to explain their problem to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a spokesperson?
We did catch up with the band and we had to build a multi-level parking garage, create three vehicles and help get them to a secret meeting place without being stopped by somebody who was trying to stop them. We did a ramp, a zip line, and a screenshot. And I'll read that.
She's a multi-level parking garage. That's a fantastic, great job, girls. We have certificates. I won't read all those.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Flaherty, is there another competition for Odyssey of the Mind or is it just state?
There would be world, but we do not advance it up in Fort Thomas.
Okay.
So they make it as far as they can go.
Congratulations, young ladies.
Congratulations, great job.
Yes.
Who wants first?
Middle school. Samantha, I waved her in.
All right, Helen. Our third state champion, this is the JV dance team, correct? Island's JV dance team state champions. Can you show us your number real quick?
No. My fault, I didn't bring the music.
Why don't you guys go ahead and just introduce yourself if you don't mind?
I'm Lucia Phelps, ninth grade.
I'm Emma Bayes, tenth grade.
I'm Cassie Peterson, tenth grade.
I'm Lauren Hellman, eighth grade.
I'm Rachel Hoffman, eighth grade.
I'm L.A.T., for eighth grade.
I'm Kayla Bowling, eighth grade.
We have 16 members altogether, but a lot of them had their studio dance classes tonight.
And they won both in hip-hop and pop?
Yes.
Great, congratulations.
So how many state championships does that dance squad generally?
Three? For this squad?
No, for all, I think, many, many times. I think these guys have won before as well.
They definitely, they won everything last year. I don't know if either of that, do any of you guys know?
Yeah, I think this is the third.
The third.
We no longer just a football school. Well, congratulations, fantastic job. We've got some certificates and shirts for you all as well.
Samantha, are you doing middle school too?
Yeah. Playing dual roles.
Thank you very much for coming. All right, middle school dance team, also state champions, congratulations. How about introducing yourself?
My name's Emery Brewer and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Macy Cook and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Lindsay Thompson and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Kana Lee and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Alan Adams and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Riley Williams and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Gwen and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Olivia Hoffman and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Woody Fairing and I'm seventh grade.
I'm Dennis Darrow and I'm eighth grade.
I'm Maddie Roach and I'm eighth grade.
I'm Katie Dashlin and I'm sixth grade.
I'm Katie Wilson and I'm seventh grade.
Fantastic. So how many for these girls? I guess they're younger, so not too many, obviously.
Not as many. This was, what, do you have any? First time from home? And hip-hop was, I don't know if they'd ever went to hip-hop, but this was the first time in college, that's what they won.
So they were hip-hop and college?
It was the first year, it was a big deal.
Congrats.
Well, congratulations, job well done. I'm sure you're gonna have many more since you girls are so young. Here's your first shirt of men. And your certificate.
Congratulations, ladies. Thanks, parents, for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I have the pleasure of introducing some amazing second graders. I'm Mrs. McFlamroth, their world language teacher. They've been working on a butterfly project and I'm gonna allow them to introduce themselves and then they'll go ahead and start with their presentation.
Okay, so this is my first year teaching kindergarten, first and second grade. Previously I taught third, fourth, and fifth grade Spanish. And Julie Dashly started the Journey North Butterfly Project and we were lucky to get them to do that at Moir and they're doing it at Woodfield as well. So this is across all three schools, this is just a sample. These are students from Mrs. Cook's second grade class. So what we did shortly is we created paper butterflies and we sent them to Mexico. And then in Mexico, the students created butterflies and they're sending them back to us and haven't gotten them yet, we've got them in May. But this symbolizes the migration from the United States, from our butterflies to Mexico and Mexico back to the United States. So I thought we'd start by giving a small sample of what we normally do in class. So the next slide, we talk about metamorphosis and also the next slide, we talk about migration. Those are our two big topics. So I'll just show you a little bit of what we do in class and here we go. Okay. Estudiantes, vamos hablar del ciclo de la vida de la mariposa monarca. ¿Cuál es la primera estación del ciclo de la vida de la mariposa monarca? ¿Cuál es la primera?
Huevo.
Es el huevo. Pueden ver? Es el huevo. Sí, el huevo. ¿Cuál es la segunda estación del ciclo de la vida?
Oruda.
Es la oruga, muy bien. ¿Cuál es la tercera?
Crisalida.
Es la crisalida, muy bien. Es la crisalida. Y Tara, ¿qué es la cuarta?
Mariposa adulta.
Es una mariposa adulta. Fantástico. ¿Y cómo se llama este proceso en español?
Metamorfosis.
Es metamorfosis, fantástico. ¿Y qué pasa cuando en invierno y también en otoño en los Estados Unidos? David, ¿qué pasa?
Hace frío.
Hace frío. Entonces las mariposas monarcas vuelan, ¿a dónde vuelan?
México.
Muy bien, vuelan a México. ¿Y en México, dónde viven en México?
Bosque.
En un bosque, en un bosque especial. ¿Y qué pasa en primavera y verano? Tara, ¿qué pasa? ¿Qué pasa?
Hace calor.
Hace calor, muy bien. ¿Y cómo se llama este proceso de Estados Unidos a México y a México a Estados Unidos? ¿Cómo se llama este proceso? Es la...
Migración.
Muy bien, migración, fantástico, estudiantes, muy bien, en español. Normally we speak completely in Spanish for the whole class and they do a really good job keeping up with it. And so I, we have a couple pictures. Caroline, can you tell us a little bit, what is this picture of?
Lots of...
Lots of butterflies.
And that's where they live in Mexico, right? So it's amazing to see thousands and thousands of butterflies. And the next one, this shows, it's hard to see, but the trees are covered. So this is where we're sending our paper butterflies in Mexico. And this is our class, this is one of them that we made. Tara has a sample one. This is not one that we sent, it's from a different kind of a practice. And so the next slide, you can see, we got to send ours to Consuelo Fernández Albarrán Elementary, which is a school where they have the biosphere, the bio reserve. And the next slide, so Moir, they chose ours, it's right in the front, that's one of them, which is really neat, so that's hanging up in classrooms somewhere. And the next one shows our specific ones, Mrs. Cook's class, that's the one that they made. So these students right here from that class are, they made one and it gone its way to us here in Fort Thomas and there's one going to each school. So not just Moir, but also Johnson and Emery. Okay. Really quickly, I thought you can tell us something you learned or your favorite part about the project. David, can you tell us first? What did we get to do? Did we go on kind of a...
So we, so we got to Mexico and explored the secret bosque.
Bosque's forest. So you can kind of see, it's really neat with the iPads, you can, when you go around, it shows like, it's like you're there. So I could look, I could say, mira clase, ves una mariposa? And if they all pointed their iPads in that direction, they would see like a butterfly.
And in Mexico, there are no walls in the buildings.
In the school.
Because it is very, very hot.
Yeah, well, yeah. What's your favorite part? What did you do?
So I learned about the language, this is the monarch butterfly. I learned that the butterflies travel to Mexico because it's too cold down here. I learned about Mexico and the bosque.
The bosque, I saw that.
And we ordered some caterpillars and then we are going to watch the butterflies grow, the caterpillars grow into butterflies.
I learned that about millions of butterflies can fit on one tree.
Right, exactly. So we'll just end with a song that we like to sing during class, okay? Are you guys ready? You can put your papers down, come on.
Fantástico. Muy bien, Mexico is really muy caliente. That was awesome. I really, that was incredible. That much Spanish. They're totally engaged and looking at it the whole time. So we have shirts for them as well. I'll give them to you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, parents, for coming out.
Good job, students. That was pretty awesome.
That's pretty cool.
We're gonna need the back row.
Come on. The back queues need to come down.
All right, community forum. Does anyone have anything for their community forum tonight that they'd like to share with us? Questions, concerns, comments, topics for future meetings? Okay, action items. Island High School renovation, phase four project update, Jerry Wispert.
It's our monthly report on the high school fieldhouse and gymnasium renovations. No action was taken by Sentry in the last month. To correct some of the issues we've been having, we have had some discussions and they have sent some subs out to look at areas such as the restrooms in the gymnasium lobby. We have, as discussed, taken some action on our side to prepare documentation and kind of inform them of a deadline to complete all this work or we will move on to other contractors. I called over to Joe's office this afternoon and talked to him about a couple of things and he was unavailable at that time, so we'll talk maybe tonight or tomorrow about a proposed meeting with Joe and myself and a few others Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. if he's available. So it's kind of a little surprise for you. So hopefully that meeting will go a long way toward resolving what needs to be put together to give Sentry legal notice of their obligations, their deadline, and what action we will take if they do not comply.
Joe and I corresponded on that as well. I guess it's a good plan of action that we're together and let us know where you go from here.
So there's no action to be taken on either of those projects. So we do have a project report on the Moir Elementary renovation, which is going quite well. In the last month, Moir has completed quite a bit of work, including the pouring of the terrazzo flooring in the cafeteria and the main hallway. They had all, the majority of that down as of Friday afternoon and they were in the process of starting to polish it and finishing it to get it to look like the final product. The majority of the mechanical work above ceiling is complete. There's a little bit of work that the AV contractors have to do and the access control contractors have to do. And then some inspections that have to take place prior to the ceiling grid being put in, but they're hoping to get that done in the next couple weeks, three weeks, and get started on installing the final ceiling grid. One of the things that has to be done is, we've talked about commissioning in the past, that is now something that is required. We hired a commissioning agent over a year ago and we had our initial meeting after the progress meeting last week so that everybody is on board with them going through, looking at all the mechanical systems, electrical systems, and then reporting back to the contractor and subcontractors what needed to be done to rectify things that may have been installed incorrectly or needed to be adjusted to meet the project specifications. So it's something we have done in the past on projects that was voluntary, but the state is now requiring projects to do this. So we do have, if there's no questions, we do have a few action items on this particular project. We have first, change proposal 39, which is the amount of $31,365. This, as we discussed, is for changing the television mounts out to one that meets our needs better. It's a request that we brought to the contractor. So if we can have approval for that amount.
Do you have motions for the change proposal on the TV brackets for Moir Elementary? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries.
And then change proposal 50R in the amount of $29,092. This is to change the originally specified 70-inch smart interactive displays of the 4,000 series to 75-inch smart interactive displays of the 6,000 series, which were not available in the project bid. So, and it's adding two additional displays, going from 37 to 39, I believe it is.
All right, any question on change proposal 50R? Upscale the screens.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Motion carries.
And then those two items along with other smaller items have been added into change order number five. The total amount to be presented for you on that is $98,602.
Jerry, what's 59? Can you explain what 59 is? 59 would have been Nora flooring, 2-millimeter flooring change.
That's...
What are we talking about? What's the difference?
We, was that where we're going? We, in a couple places, we went to a little bit thinner product and a couple places, we decided to upgrade to a little bit thicker product based upon the areas of expected use. We did have, I want to say, a couple...
Credit like 17,000.
We had a credit on an area because some of the original specifications had the thicker flooring and we felt we could save. And we really only needed the slightly thinner flooring and in this case, we looked at some areas and decided we probably needed to upgrade in those areas. And there were some areas that, you know, Joe and I looked at and then agreed upon that we wanted the little bit thicker product in those locations. I don't know if Joe has any comments?
It has nothing to do with the terrazzo, this is... No, I don't know. It's Noro ECO over to Noro Environmental, it's 15, almost $15,000. I just wondered where it was. It says 2 millimeters on both. It's a different type of product. I mean, like it's, basically it's all made by Noro. You make an ECO and a Varo Care. It's a, the Varo Care is a better product, but it has more rubber in it, so it could last longer and it should be a little bit thicker. I don't know what that description goes on your paper.
Yeah, it is slight, there's a slight depth change. They might both be labeled 2-millimeter, but the one is a little bit thicker.
Is this throughout the entire... Yes. Do you have any of the ECO, Noro rubber anywhere, anything special? It's all the Varo Care.
Any other questions before we... I'm gonna make sure we address everything that there might be questions or concerns about.
I need a motion on change order number five.
Two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Motion carries.
And then this month's Moir pay application, pay application 17 is the amount of $1,010,784.24, which is not quite a record. We did a $1.1 million pay app to Moir on the high school phase three project. This is the time that a lot of items that are coming onto the site, the terrazzo being installed, kitchen equipment was delivered. There were just some big dollar items that we knew were coming around this time. Next month, maybe this large, maybe slightly larger. It's just that time in the project where all this gym equipment was installed on this pay application. A lot of big ticket items hit this month and there'll be quite a few next month as well.
And for the record, you appear to be doing a fantastic job in our conversations with you and what I've seen down there is that we're ahead of schedule, everything's moving along, Jerry, we've had very few problems. We're very happy to see you work.
Yes.
Reminding the board that we do have the tour on Thursday, 20th, at 10:00 a.m. with the folks from USHCC. And the community will give a little bit of a preview as well because Mark Collier has actually got to go through with this and take some pictures and stuff and post some things, you know, Fort Thomas Matters, so. Any members can see that as well. We've been, we were very diligent to make this project and the school as unique as we could in the framework of what the state will allow you to do. I think we've done an excellent job, certainly with the help of the architects and Moir. I think it's a pretty cool place. Everybody's really gonna be excited.
And the last comment I'll make is, last week, Monday through Friday, after school week stay, I was able to take a group of Moir teachers and staff through and they were highly impressed, highly excited. Some did have questions about why we chose to do this versus that, but that's expected. We had the same thing when we had tours through Woodfield with that staff and we'll get the same thing when we tour the renovated part about a year from now. So it's kind of par for the course. They see things and they just have questions similar to what you all have when you see things related to the project. So overall, I think they were very excited, very impressed.
Did, have the grades been decided where everybody's going in or is it still a discussion?
They do have a plan for next year and then a plan for the following year, but things could possibly change. I think next year's pretty set. There are people that are moving into classrooms inside the new addition that will be their permanent classroom. There are some teachers, particularly I believe a couple first grade teachers, who will be inside the building next year, but it will not be their permanent classroom. They'll move the following year into rooms in the renovated phase. And then, of course, we have a, still a lot of space occupied outside in the mobile classrooms and what'll be, what's now the gym area will become the media center and offices.
And the mobile area won't change at all, right?
The front part or...
No, I'm just talking about what they look, what they look like.
No, they will not, they will not look any different. Yeah. Inside of the gym unit will be modified to meet the functions of the media center, possibly a computer lab in the offices. You don't want to just throw all those functions in one wide open space. We'll build some walls and give them some privacy and give them the technology and electric they need. So.
Any more questions? Comments? Not being approval for pay application number 17 in the amount of $1,010,000 and change.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Motion carries. That's the largest pay application I personally have been part of in the industry. I don't know what I've ever had. Largest in the last? Over a million dollars. I don't think so.
So, like I said, I do know of one that was, I believe, 1.1 on part of the high school. So the next part on the Moir Elementary renovation is the phase two asbestos abatement. This is where we have to hire, the district hires an abatement contractor to go in and remove asbestos, anything that could be considered hazardous material. We received three bids. The low bid was by Environmental Demolition Group. The low bid was by Environmental Demolition Group. They had a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. The other two bids were a hundred-and-seventy-three, I believe, by Sunesis, and then Aztec Services bid, one-seventy-eight, nine-ninety. So, we are recommending that you accept the bid by Environmental Demolition Group. That one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars, coupled with the roughly twenty-five thousand dollars that we spent to abate phase-one prior to demolition, leaves us fifteen thousand dollars under the budget we established for that.
So, when we talked on Thursday, you were hoping this about, this would be-
I, I had actually, I thought the phase-one was forty-five thousand dollars. I was about twenty thousand dollars off. When I said a hundred thousand dollars, I thought we had spent forty-five and we had a hundred left, but it was twenty-five, and we had a hundred-and-twenty-six left.
Which is good.
Or a hundred-and-thirty-five, actually, I believe, left. So this is, this will keep us below the budget we established for that, and leave us a little cushion in case something is found as they go in and do demolition in the building, which is almost possible.
Refresh my memory based on our conversation Thursday, most of this is floor tile?
This is floor tile, and then the glue dots above the original ceiling.
Glue dots, that's right.
There's a little bit of pipe wrap, but not much, 'cause that was abated previously. Anything we could get to previously was abated fifteen years ago, and this is the stuff that was encapsulated under rugs and above ceiling and things like that, that did not need to be dealt with then, or could not be dealt with then. But now, as we go in to renovate the building, we have to deal with it now.
And there are most of the classrooms, all the classrooms, or what?
Uh, floor tile is not in every classroom, because there were times when we would go in to replace carpet. If we did not think it was in a, a good condition, we would abate that classroom at that time. So there are several classrooms, as well as the office area. Cafeteria, we abated prior to putting rubberized flooring down. So there are a number of locations where the floor tile has already been dealt with, but the glue dots are pretty much in every classroom.
Right. The motion for approval is for hazardous material abatement, a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand in Moyer.
No. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have on the agenda the Johnson Elementary renovation, and I know just saying that excites certain people in the room, scares others. The, this is on there because, as you know, several months ago, we asked the board to approve a request for proposals to architect and engineering firms. Those were sent out to four firms around the area, and two architect firms responded, Ross Tarrant Architects out of Lexington, and then Robert Emmett Hayes, and it is our recommendation to the board that you accept the request for proposals from Robert Emmett Hayes and Associates, based upon prior work with the district, as well as, you know, the fact that they are local.
And they do a fine job.
No. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
They got another job.
There'll be, there'll be some next steps on that.
Well, I mean, you know, we're, we're in the design phase, you know, right now, so we're really, you know, my, my hope was that Joe would be ready, would be shovel-ready on that January of two thousand and eighteen. Okay? Can we do that? Did you all hear him say?
I heard him.
Then, be good.
Can we do that?
Good. Alright. So, well, I, I think it would behoove the district to be in that position, because that's-
Shovel-ready, that's what you need to be.
That's when the legislative, legislature's gonna meet, and, you know, we're pointing all of our arrows in that direction. So, I think that that's, I think it's, we have a really great shot at it.
And in terms of what you might see, as Joe and his firm are able to get drawings to a certain point, at that point, we'll have to bring in a company like, you know, whether it be, probably feeling to do some testing, you know, and, and Vioxx and Vioxx to maybe a little more surveying, things like that. So you will see a little bit of physical presence on the campus as they try and determine if their ideas are physically possible, given the site conditions. So that work will take place at a yet-to-be-determined date, but there will be times where the Johnson kids will get to see people out there and go, "What in the world are they doing?"
Has anybody seen the little preliminary workout that Joe did? Pretty neat how it integrates in there. It still looks, it gives that one-story look in the front, but because it's such a, a lot of road front is there, and it's a steep lot, it's multi-story in the back, it's, it really integrates well, I think. Really, that's one of the biggest challenges, obviously, to have these things in residential communities, especially an older one, a tight one like ours. Should take it a look, Chris. Alright.
And then the final thing that I have is an award of contract for custodial supplies. We do this annually, and a copy of the bid tab for that is attached. We had responses from five companies, most of whom we have been doing business with for a number of years. Every year, the volume of, of what products are with what company changes a little bit, because some companies are able to bid a little here or there. Other companies have merged with larger companies, so then they get a little bit better pricing. We highlighted in yellow the apparent low bids and the bids we are recommending you accept. I believe in cases, there were two ties, in which case, we left them with the existing vendor who was supplying them. We are asking you to accept these bids and also to authorize that we include in the letters awarding the bids a provision for timely delivery of product when ordered, because we do have concern with one vendor on here, plus one is, one is new that we haven't done business with, whether they can deliver product in a timely fashion. And we have notified them that, you know, our plan is to have the board authorize awarding them the bid, but if they do not come through and are able to supply our needs in a timely fashion, we will move away from them to the next lowest bid. Because if we order product that we need in our schools and it is not delivered for a month, it could be a problem. We have a, an ample storage for material, but not enough to last months on end.
Jerry, do we need to add that to the motion, then? I mean, do we need to, just specify, just that only?
And is timely, specific enough, or not very subjective?
It, the, the letters would be a little more specific. We would like product ordered within a week, or delivered within a week. Usually, the, the process is this. Building supervisors put their supply orders in. We pull them, they come pick them up on Fridays. On that Friday, we know what product we're low on. We place POs with these companies on Friday, and we need to have it by the following Thursday if we're going to fulfill orders the following Friday. So that basically gives them a week to deliver. Most of them have delivery routes in our area, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, but they have to have the product in their warehouse to deliver it, and that is the concern. Will they stock up enough of products to make sure that when we order forty cases of toilet paper, they'll have forty on hand to bring to us?
So do you want to put with delivery and with delivery? I'd, I'd rather make it more specific than not.
Yeah, we can-
I'm sorry?
We, we can, we can say with delivery within one week of order placement. That's the goal.
It seems a little gray, I mean, it's less gray than timely.
Yes, it's less gray than timely.
Well, I guess, I think the question, I think this might be-
I think the whole motion is-
That this might be Brad's point. I, you know, so-
We're not really approving the-
In the language that they were, that they responded to in the, the proposal, did it say, was, did we include this, this contingency about time? And did they, did they know when they put in their bid that they were subject to-
I do not know if it was in the original proposal, because part of it was prompted by a new supplier coming forward and requesting the proposal. Traditionally, we have not had any issues. We can leave it out entirely, just accept the bid.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know if you can add that in a motion if it wasn't a part of what they responded to. You know what I'm saying? I don't know that you can, um, do that.
No, we can leave it out, and if, and if there becomes an issue, we'll cover it then.
Right.
If, if we give them proper notification, if it becomes an issue, then we give them notification in writing of our concerns, which is fairly typical.
Right.
I think I'll leave it like this.
Yeah. Now, we put, maybe when we put it out to them in the future, we might wanna say, when we put it out to them, that we reserve the right-
That's fine.
To go to the next lowest bid, if indeed the product is not delivered in specified amount of time. But just 'cause we put that in a motion now, it doesn't make them aware of that necessarily. It's a board action, but it doesn't make the vendor aware of it.
You can call it the century clause.
There is a little bit of thinking in, in, along those lines as well.
Century clause.
I wouldn't do that.
Okay. You good with the motion now?
Yeah.
Right. Did a motion to award contract for custodial supplies to the lowest best bid that meets individual item specifications.
No. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, bonding the treasurer, Mr. Kirchner.
As you know, annually, we, we ask, that we recommend, we would allocate the funds necessary to provide bonding for our treasurer, and do, and do rents and, and I think it's around four hundred dollars. It's a previous bond amount of money, but it provides, you know, some insurance for the board based on our financial transactions, so I would recommend that we do that again this year.
Alright. The motion to bond the treasurer.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Publishing Services.
Also, we have the option in our contract with Harmony Publishing, a current contract to extend for a year at the, at the current price. Is that correct, Peggy?
Yes.
So essentially, when we, when we bid that out prior, we had language in there which would, which would enable us to do that, and so we're recommending, we're satisfied with their, with their services, and we're recommending that we extend that contract for another year at, at the same price.
I did a motion to approve extending the contract, Publishing Services to Harmony Publishing for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen.
No.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Employee Wellness Incentive.
As you know, the last several years, the board has tried to encourage wellness on the part of our staff, and also community engagement by sponsoring each, each member who, of our staff who was willing to participate in the Firecracker 5K, the Fourth of July, sponsoring their entry into the race, and encouraging them throughout the springtime to prepare for that, and to, you know, get fit and be healthy. And, so it's a good employee wellness incentive, and also, it's a, it's a great, it's a great show of support for our community, where we have that many of our staff members, sometimes as many as a third of our staff is there, and sort of depends on when the holiday falls, you know, but I mean, hopefully this year, we'll have a good showing, and there'll be a lot of folks out there.
It will be held on Tuesday, which is the Fourth of July, so-
It is held on Tuesday this year, so, so we will probably have a really strong showing this year.
Seems to be very competitive, apparently.
It can be, it can, it can be. There's, there's a little trash talking that goes on, and whatnot, and I, I hate that part of it.
You have to finish the race, though, right?
I personally, I personally hate that part of it. I really wish that, that we could just all be, get along and be classy about it.
You gotta finish?
And, uh-
The worst thing you can do is go out hard and not finish.
Heck, you leave, we'll talk after this, okay?
Isn't Stratton Long wins all the time?
I'm glad you're like-
When he shows up.
Does he take his shirt off?
It just doesn't look like a hardcore runner. I'll need a, I'll need a rusty for a week.
Did you know a rusty?
That's me running to the buffet, tiny guy. So anyway, I, I would recommend that we do that again. I think, I think it's a great thing for our community, a great thing for our staff.
I would agree with that. We need a motion to do that again.
No.
I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We're gonna have kids that aren't sure if they're gonna see you again.
Absolutely. Discussion items, board committee updates. I'm sure we have many of those tonight. Who wants to go first?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Has met the fulfillment of the three meetings that we have first full year. There is a proposal coming to the board for creation of archery position, to compete in the fall, not a winter sport, but to compete next full year in the region and state level for archery. So that will be coming from Mr. Haskamp next few meetings. I assume that might be next month.
Is that a, a team, or they do it boys and girls?
Trolet sport.
Trolet.
And the upper level dominated by females. The best archers in this region-
It's a Hunger Games.
Five out of six were girls.
Most of the schools around here have team, archery team?
Quite, it's like thirteen-
Really?
In Northern Kentucky have archery teams. So we're gonna fit right into the mix there. And the Title IX tests that we have to meet each year are being prepared and will be presented later in the school year. We'll pass one for a little bit intro.
That's right. I'll go next. From the foundation standpoint, the foundation and the alumni, Highlands Alumni Association have combined, I think we've talked about that before, and their annual alumni dinner, where we are recognizing teachers as well as alumni of the year, is Saturday, April the twenty-ninth at the Country Club. So I'd encourage my fellow board members to come. They are also going to recognize Mr. Kirchner on his retirement, so I'm hopeful that you guys can all come and support that new partnership. So I know they've, they've had some issues that they've got to work through, but they've, they've come over, they've gotten through those now, and it's a joint, the Alumni Association is now falling under the foundation as a committee under the foundation, and so they're still working on some details as to what that will entail, but I hope everybody can attend on the twenty-ninth.
Tickets?
Yeah, tickets can be purchased at F T E F dot org. I don't remember off the top of my head how much they are.
Thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five, thank you.
Board's back? Right. Two big questions. Alright, anybody else, board committee updates? Consent agenda. Anybody have any discussion regarding the consent agenda? If not, any motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business this evening? Karen, anybody having back in town for a couple days?
Thanks. I leave again the first week of May, so.
How many days do you have to live in your house? She's gotta charge her wife some point, get the residency cost and-
It's called the empty nester.
Alright, if not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you.